Welcome to another of the 2021 candidate forums presented by UMA, Urban Media Arts, formerly known as Malden Television. I'm Joe Lynch, a producer, director, and show host with the Somerville Media Center and president of its Board of Directors. I am delighted and honored to have been asked to moderate this UMA event for the City of Malden Ward Five and Ward Six City Council Candidates. The general election is on November 2nd, 2021. Please visit the City of Malden Elections Page on the city website for more information about this year's elections. On this program, I'll be spending time with the candidates for Ward Five Counselor Barbara Murphy and Ari Taylor, and the candidates for Ward Six Counselor Jerry Leone and Steven Winslow. Welcome to the candidates. The rules for this forum have been developed by UMA and agreed to by the candidates. Those rules are as follows. Each candidate will be allowed four minutes for an opening statement. Questions for tonight's forum have been submitted, developed, and formatted by numerous Malden civic and media organizations as well as the UMA staff. The questions have not been provided to the candidates and were submitted to me on the day of this program taping. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute response to each question. Candidates will be allowed or will be asked the same question. Candidates may ask the moderator to repeat the question, but may not ask the moderator to interpret the meaning of the question. A timekeeper from UMA will signal to the candidates and to the moderator when time is up. The moderator will, at their discretion, interrupt the candidate when time is over, but may allow the candidate to finish their sentence. Each candidate will be allowed a four-minute closing statement. With the rules read, and if the candidates, the technical and timekeeper staff are ready to begin, let's go. We'll start with a four-minute opening statement from candidate Barbara Murphy. Barbara, take it away.
Okay, we are unmuted. Thank you very much and welcome. So, okay. I am Barbara Murphy, as I was just introduced, and I am running for reelection to the Ward Five City Council seat. First of all, I'd like to thank UMA for hosting this forum and allowing the voters to get to know me on a personal and professional level. A little bit about me. I was born in Malden. I graduated Malden High School. I married my husband Jeff, also a Malden boy. We decided to raise our boys here, Jeff and Pat, in our hometown and built our house on Forest Street. Over the years, our family has grown, and we now have two lovely daughter-in-laws and three beautiful granddaughters. And of course, not to be forgotten is Duke, our rescue dog who heals from North Carolina. Duke is my walking buddy, and most mornings you can find us on the trails hiking Blueberry Hill. Those of you who know me know that I love dogs. A proud moment in my life was receiving the ASPCA Angel Human Hero Award for my work on breed-specific legislation. It is an honor that I will never forget. I've served on the Malden City Council over the past 12 years, and during this time, the city has welcomed many new faces, said goodbye to some longtime friends, and prospered through it all to a point where we find ourselves a thriving community in the envy of our neighbors. I want to use my opening to highlight some of the accomplishments that I'm most proud of. Each year of my tenure, I have been on the Finance Committee and many years Chair of Finance, including this fiscal year. The city's financial position is the backbone of being able to deliver services to our residents. I am proud to say this year's $187 million budget was passed unanimously, and we have the highest bond rating ever and the healthiest reserve level in the city's history. My love of gardening made me embark on a mission to build a community garden, which inspired me to establish our Malden Community Gardens. Like so many Malden residents, I grew up in an apartment and never had access to a plot of land. Today, we have five thriving gardens on the bike path with over 100 beds that residents can access to plant and nurture plants and vegetables. It is a flourishing community within a community. The last year saw us reopen Pleasant Street and introduce a brand-new and beautiful, I might add, City Hall to the public. I was an active member of the Municipal Building Committee that was charged with making this a success. And anyone who has traveled to the downtown area can see that it's paying dividends already in the form of a thriving downtown. It is a legacy that I am proud I have been an integral part of. As a Ward Five Counselor, I'm driven by a focus on quality of life issues. It's the lifeblood of being a city counselor. Speeding and traffic safety are both quality of life and safety issues and one of the most common complaints a city counselor receives. Working together with Ward One Counselor Pay Crowe, we spearheaded the effort to make Malden a drive-25 community, lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour citywide. To reinforce that effort, I was the first counselor to implement flashing, excuse me, flashing speed signs to alert drivers to this speed and give the traffic department meaningful data to identify problem areas and allocate resources appropriately. I have been proud to spearhead the designation of over three acres of Ward Five as conservation land to help maintain our open space. And finally, I want to highlight my efforts to make sure we listen to our residents. We heard loud and clear from our residents that they wanted limits on the size and density of buildings across the city. I sponsored and successfully passed an ordinance that limits the height of residential buildings to three stories outside of the downtown and six stories downtown. I look forward to a spirited dialogue tonight on the issues that are important to the residents of Malden. It is our ability to talk through issues when we don't always agree that makes Malden a community it is. I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Barbara. Up next is candidate for Ward Five, Ari Taylor. Ari, all yours.
Thank you so much. I'd like to start by thanking UMA for hosting tonight's forum and a special thanks to Joe Lynch for moderating. For the purposes of transparency, I'd like to say that I'm proud to serve as Board President for UMA, and I'm proud of the work that UMA has done to ensure this debate be held fairly and ethically. That being said, my name is Ari Taylor, and I'm a community activist with a proven track record of getting things done for our city. I'm a lifelong resident of Ward Five, where I live with my husband Jeff, our three daughters, Emily, Charlotte, and Phoebe, and my mother Diane. I've spent my entire life and career working hard for our community, and I promise to be a fierce advocate and effective communicator on the city council. As Board President of UMA, I oversaw the transition of our rebranding process to usher in a new and inclusive era for our community. My work on Malden Arts has helped revitalize our downtown area into a hub of public art and pop-up spaces, adding murals, pocket parks, sculptures along the bike path. We even secured a line item on the state budget to ensure we can grow public art in the city of Malden. As an active member of the Malden Democratic City Committee, I won Democrat of the Year in 2020 for my work on Democratic elections and voter outreach. And I am also a member of the Zonta Club of Malden, an organization that advocates for the, for women's rights both locally and internationally. Finally, I created, hosted, and managed MaldenEvents.com to provide a space for information on events to keep the community informed and engaged. I'm running for city council because we're at a pivotal point in our city's history, and we need change that will deliver advocacy, accountability, and action for all of us. This means getting the basics right when it comes to streets, sidewalks, and traffic mitigation. But there is so much more we can do as community leaders, like supporting basic human rights and ensuring all of our neighbors feel welcome, making sure public buildings are handicap accessible, holding developers accountable, and actively engaging all members of our community through outreach and public comments. Again, I'd like to say thank you. My name is Ari Taylor, and I hope to earn your vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, so we can create a Malden that works for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ari. Thank you very much. Up next, candidate for Ward Six, Jerry Leone. Jerry, it's all yours.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Joe. I want to thank UMA. I want to thank all the candidates that are on tonight and their supporters and family. My name is Jerry Leone, a lifelong resident of Ward Six. I attended Malden High School, class of 1998, and then I joined the service. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force Reserves. I did serve two terms on the Malden School Committee, where I served on the Budget Subcommittee. I chaired the Public Safety Committee, and I was co-chair of Policy. I'm proud of the record that I maintained on the school committee. One of the things that highlighted my career on the school committee was the fact that I was able to work, you know, with other counselors, whether they agreed with me or not. I usually got outvoted a lot on the city council because I, well, I forgot to say, I'm also the Chair of the Malden Republican Party as well. One of the things I was proud of on the school committee was I helped raise $20,000 with another member to help the co-ed hockey team with Malden in Revere. Part of the, we used to get parents that called a lot, and I would listen. I would listen to all sides and then come up with, you know, a best decision that could best suit the students. Now I'm running for Ward Six City Council. As Ari mentioned, we're at a pivotal point that there's two sides, and they say every election is the most important election. But believe me when I say, and all the candidates will probably agree, that this is the most important election because this can determine, obviously will determine, the future of Malden. One of the things that prompted me to run, because I am, when I said a veteran, I am a former police officer of the United States Air Force, and I know throughout the country, there's been an attack on the police, which certain groups want reforms, and I will fight against that. I want to help protect the green spaces that we have left, not only in Ward Six, but throughout Malden. We need to, recently, there's been, you know, the problem with businesses being eaten up in Maplewood Square, and that needs to stop, and we need to protect businesses and actually invite more businesses in. So there's a lot of topics. I'm sure they're going to be covered tonight. So I just want to thank everybody and have a great debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. Our next candidate is Steve Winslow, candidate for Ward Six. Steve, all yours.
Hi, Joe, and thank you so much for hosting tonight. I want to thank UMA and all the partners who submitted questions for helping to organize this forum. And particularly want to vote, thank all the voters who are joining in tonight to take the time to educate yourselves about the important choices we have on November 2nd. My name is Steve Winslow, and I'm running for the open seat for Ward Six City Counselor that Dave Kamel has held but is stepping away from. I am currently a counselor-at-large, and I have been for the past four years. And prior to that, I served six years as a school committee rep for Ward Six. My wife Helen and I have lived in Malden for over 30 years, and our grandchildren went to the Shepherd School, and we're very happy. We first rented over by Oak Grove for the convenience of the orange line to our jobs. And then we bought a house with the help of the Redevelopment Authority here in Maplewood, and we really like the charm of being able to walk to our businesses in the square and the convenience of the bus service, which is very frequent. So we really enjoy that and all the friends we've made in doing that. So that's one of the things we really like. You're probably wondering, you know, if Steve Winslow was your Ward Counselor, what can you expect? And one of the things I think you can really know is that I, in my 30 years in Malden, have had a major impact and really worked hard to make a difference in your community. As you see behind me, the Northern Strand Trail. I worked patiently and persistently through all sorts of obstacles to make this trail a reality. I'm happy to have worked with the city counselors and mayors over the years to get it done in Malden and very excited. There's a $13.5 million project to take that all the way from the casino in Everett to the waterfront in Lynn. A very big and popular project. I'm going to continue. I continue to do cleanups. And even this month was at the opening of Joseph's Garding, right there in Maplewood. I helped secure over nearly $700,000 in funds for improving Trachten Park. That is the biggest investment in Trachten Park since I've lived here and happy to say that the mayor's committed another million dollars. We've improved the playground and the pathway out there, but we're going to rebuild the field, the court, and the dog park with the remaining money that we're getting from the mayor. So you can see, I've done a lot. I'm already working with residents in Ward Six on the current challenges. Preserving open space, Counselor Kamel and I voted to conserve much of the city-owned land up in Maplewood Highlands. We're working with Crescent Lane residents to make a park there. One of the big issues that's come up this year is flooding. Bowman Street, Constance Street, Jacob Street have had flooding. I'm leading the city task force to address that, and I'm going to work to secure ARPA money to make sure our residents are protected there. I am also leading effort on the city council related to saving Maplewood Square. I've written several ordinances and informing the committee that's going to lead the future of Maplewood Square. It's critical that residents take the lead there. I've headed up many drafting ordinances for the Rules and Ordinance Committee in terms of small cell that brings good technology to all of us, drafting the Affordable Housing Trust documents. So I have a lot of skills that I bring to the council. So by voting for Steve Winslow for Ward Six Counselor, you're going to have someone who listens and cares for the community and is going to work towards what you need. I reunite people and really work to take action to make things happen, and you'll see that proven track record of major accomplishments is something that I'll continue to do. And I look forward to asking humbly for your vote on November 2nd for Steve Winslow for Ward Six City Council. Have a good debate, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of the candidates. We're going to move on to the questions and answers. As a reminder to the candidates, you have two minutes each. You will all be asked the same question. Ready to go? Very good. The first question comes from the Malden Advocate. In Malden, as in other communities across the state and the New England region, there has been an increase in revenue and patronage for our local businesses, both in restaurants and retail outlets, since most of the pandemic restrictions have been either adjusted or lifted altogether. What is your opinion of the city's efforts and actions to support our local businesses in the pandemic era? And what would you wish to see in the future as we continue to recover from the shutdown of the economy? We're going to start with, Steve, don't get too comfortable. We're going to come right back to you. That first answer will be from Steve Winslow. Steve, you have to unmute yourself, I believe.
Joe, I know our city has been very dedicated to working with our businesses. We have Kevin Duffy working very diligently, and I know I work with him on several fronts. We work to make sure that businesses like restaurants who needed outdoor space were able to get that, and I'm very supportive of continuing to see that restaurants have that ability. Our Redevelopment Authority, which is now part of the city, offered loans to businesses so people could secure that. So we're doing that, and I think also I've been a strong advocate from day one of learning about COVID is following the science. I made sure that our senior citizens in our Malden Housing Authority were protected from visitors who might be carrying COVID. I provided through on working with local businesswoman Mai Du from the Kung Fu Studio to get Malden Housing workers PPE when there was really none available so that the residents could be protected there. So I think that, you know, we really need to follow the science. It's great that everybody's got vaccinated, so we should continue to push forward on that. And I think, I think it's great that we're able to relax, but we need to stay diligent. So I think those are the type of things we need to do to support our businesses and continue. I know the mayor has dedicated money through the ARPA program to continue to support our businesses and the great festivals that happened this summer under the guidance of, will be, you know, continued for next year. So I think we'll continue to support the businesses how we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Up next, and a reminder to the candidates, if you need me to repeat the question, I'll be more than willing to do that. Up next will be Jerry Leone.
Thank you. Great question. Well, we obviously want to see the businesses thrive and safely. No matter, you know, we want to see it move quickly. More and more people are getting vaccinated, and that's good. I know, you know, some people have their opinion on that whatsoever, but I feel that we should, I'm looking for the proper word, that relax, so more people can come in. I remember, obviously, when, we all remember when the restaurants shut down and a lot of people and businesses went out of business throughout the state and throughout the country. And obviously, it's not going to, you know, recoup overnight, but slowly and surely, we all need to do what we can to help these businesses, you know, visit the local restaurants throughout the city. And if elected to the council, I will do my part and to help the businesses of the city get to where they need to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Ari, you're up. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. So I want to echo a little bit of what Counselor Winslow had stated about the amazing festivals that the city put together. And I was extremely excited that not only did they support businesses, but they supported artists, and artists were paid for their time during that. So I think the city did a great job fostering community and helping out the local businesses. A couple of things that I would like to see in the future. I'd really like to see increased outdoor space for the businesses so that they're able to continue to thrive over the winter months, even if that's takeout spaces for parking or removing some parking so that we can expand those spaces and they can increase their business. And I'd really like to see some talks within the business community, really sit down and get people together and hear what the businesses need because they're the ones on the ground, and they're the ones who know what it's going to take to increase their business. And I think we can do that, you know, together. I think that's probably where I would go, but I have to say, I think the city did handle it really well, and I thoroughly enjoyed those every other Saturday festivals and all the work that was put into them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Up next, Barbara Murphy. One more time, Barbara.
Got it. There we go. Thank you very much. Yes, the festivals were absolutely amazing this summer. There's no question about that. And one of the lovely things about it was the fact that it brought so many people to the downtown who had not been there since Pleasant Street had been reopened, and they hadn't seen the new stores that have come into the downtown because Pleasant Street has been reopened. So I think it was a win-win for all the businesses. Couple of other things we did on the council on the beginning of the pandemic. You know, many of our businesses are charged fees, the restaurants especially, for, you know, opening, et cetera. And we relaxed those fees so they did not have to pay them this year, which I think was very much appreciated by, you know, the restaurateurs. The outdoor space has just been a wonderful add to the city. When you walk, you know, down Pleasant Street or Exchange Street and see people outside dining, it's, you know, it's actually just makes you smile with all the flowers around it. It's a very vibrant community. I'd love to see that expand also. Buying local, you know, we really, you know, need to start a program that focuses on buying local. You'll see if you've walked into some of our neighboring cities, they will have, you know, banners, et cetera. I'd like to see that really resonating through the city of Malden that we should be supporting, you know, all of the businesses here first. I know Starbucks is coming. Everyone's very excited about that, but we can't forget about the small coffee shops either. So we need to, you know, make sure that we take care of everybody. The other thing is we have a very, very active Chamber of Commerce that we work, that we deal with a lot and keeping them in the loop with everything that's going on in the city, I think, is a key initiative as we move forward because they know what their members need. They hear it every day at their meetings, and they are an asset that we need to make sure we take advantage of.
That's a great segue, Barbara. Thank you very much. Our next question is from the Malden Chamber of Commerce. Two of you, if elected, will be dealing with several issues that are particular to your ward. What do you consider the most pressing issues in your ward? And we're going to start with Ari Taylor.
Thank you so much, Joe. So this campaign has been an amazing time to get out and talk to people. And as I've been knocking doors and talking to residents, I find a huge issue is traffic. But another one has been Roosevelt Park and the communication around it. A lot of people, I would say the main issue in Ward Five right now is communication. We have many residents that don't feel heard and want a voice and want to work together with representatives to make changes within the ward, whether that's traffic, whether that's sidewalks, it's been trees. It's something different for everybody, but I think generally what I've been hearing is communication, and I think that's a huge focus. So that would be my response.
Thank you, Ari. Up next will be Barbara Murphy.
Okay, the host unmuted me. Thank you. For some reason, I'm having difficulty with that. Would you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure will. It is from the Malden Chamber of Commerce. Two of you, if elected, will be dealing with several issues that are particular to your ward. What do you consider the most pressing issues in your ward?
The most pressing issue for the businesses is basically parking. We have a couple of, I would call them strip stores on Salem Street. There's very, very limited parking, and there's not a lot of room to create a parking lot. So it's a matter of trying to set up, which I have done, you know, 15-minute parking spots so people can get in and out of businesses quickly, pick up, most of them are fast foods, pick up their, their P. pick up their, their pizza, their sub, et cetera, and have a little bit longer-term parking if you're going to get your hair done or get your nails done. But it is a very complicated issue. As I said, there is, it's a very dense area. There was not a lot of parking. But we've done what we can to mitigate some of the spaces to make it more in and out. Eastern Ave is another area where we have a selection of businesses. They do have enough parking. They don't, doesn't seem to be any problems down there with entrance and access to Eastern Ave. The new, it's going to be a challenge when we see the new striping going in on Central Street to see if that does impact those businesses, but that's something that I'll be looking at very carefully.
Thank, thank you, Barbara. Thank you very much. Jerry Leone, you good with the question? Do you want me to repeat it? There you go.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Well, to a few people, that's, that could mean anything that's important to them. I, I know when I talk to people, one of the key issues is bus and bike lanes. I know Counselor Winslow favors that. And I know we don't need that in Maplewood Square. We don't need any of that, in my opinion, throughout the city. That's just a, coming from a public safety point of view. We need to focus our efforts on other things, like the other key issue in my ward is to fix the roads, like the infrastructure and to change out old lead pipes. And obviously protect, you know, USF two, but there's other, there's other things like protecting the green space and less, no more apartments. And like Counselor Murphy said, another issue. Malden thrives on bringing in businesses like restaurants, but there's nowhere to park, especially in Maplewood Square with the businesses that, you know, that we have. So those are just some of the key issues here in Ward Six.
Thank you, Jerry. Steve Winslow, you're up.
I am shocked that Mr. Leone did not mention the top issue that's on everybody's mind in Maplewood in Ward Six. Expansion of the Mystic Valley Charter School. We had a meeting at Salem with school. We had 70 people in person, 30 people online. We had residents that had just moved to the area for the convenience of Maplewood Square as well as a 96-year-old World War II veteran who all spoke passionately about needing to make sure we save Maplewood Square. That's going to be my top priority. I've written to several ordinances already. I encourage everybody from Ward Six, in Ward Five and throughout the city to come out next Wednesday, 7 o'clock for the Planning Board and Rules and Ordinance Committee meeting. That's going to be your opportunity to be heard on the site plan review thing that will, this ordinance will make sure that your voice is heard. So come out, speak out. 100 people spoke out. We need, we need more people to speak out in the future of Maplewood Square. The future of Maplewood Square needs to be in the hands of the residents, not the charter school. The other thing that's very clear, I've heard multiply folks flooding Bowman Street area, Constance Street area, on my street as well, Jacob Street. Residents, because of the increase of rain due to climate change, is impacting our ability of our storm drains to work and poor maintenance, both from the state and some from the city side, is happening. So I am now heading up a task force and making sure we put the resources in there. I, I do agree that traffic and speed is an issue, and I'm glad that I, to work with Counselor Murphy and Counselor Crowe, when I got elected to council at large, that was when Complete Streets got passed, the 25 mile an hour speed limit got passed. People didn't need those things, so thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Candidates, I hate doing that because I know everyone is doing their best to keep to the time, but thank you. So our next question is going to come from the Greater Malden Asian Community Coalition, GMAACC. There has been a recent increase in violence against Asian Americans in our country. What are some of the measures you would like to see put in place to deal with this aggression against this group in our community? Why don't we start with Steve Winslow again?
Well, I, I do have to thank my fellow counselors. I helped with folks from GMAC to endorse and support our Asian community. We passed a resolution strongly stating that we, as a city, support our Asian residents and condemn any efforts to violence against those folks. I, I, you know, we worked to, I know many people worked to get murals up and other type of things to help show that we appreciate our Asian communities. So I think anytime that we hear as a community of these, any anti-Asian race or microaggressions, we need to speak up. We're doing that as a council. As someone who has many friends and even family members who are of Asian descent, that we really need to make sure we always speak up and work against that. And if there are specific attacks, we need to work with our police and other public safety people like our DA to make sure that people who are spreading and causing anti-Asian violence are prosecuted to the extent of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. While we hear from Jerry Leone, your response, please.
Thank you for the question. It should, not only Asian Americans, but any nationality, no one deserves that treatment. It's wrong. People need to respect each other. Malden has a unique and probably, I, I think it's the, yeah, the second most diverse city in the state with over 100 languages being spoken. So it's basically, you know, a melting pot, but nobody deserves that. What you can do, I think you asked, part of the question was what, what should be done? I think obviously it's, it's a hate crime and there should be measures of people getting fined. I mean, that's obviously, it's common sense and it's not tolerated. And that's a form of bullying, which I don't tolerate. I'm sure no one on this forum tolerates that. And that's something that, you know, the city council, if elected, that's one of the things that everyone's going to take seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you very much. Barbara Murphy, you're up.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. I'm having trouble with that mute button. I, yes, I was very pleased and proud to sign on to the resolve that the city council enacted last year, stating, as Mr. Counselor Winslow said very strongly, that we do not support any aggression towards our Asian brothers and sisters. And just following along with that, one has to take a strong stand because if you don't take a strong stand, it will just be another group that will be picked on or bullied as we move forward. Malden is a diverse community and a community, I think, that's steeped in unity. If you look around and you see the events that we have, that we all participate in, that we, we, GMACC has something, the Haitian community had something last week. I think by coming together and showing the world that we can live in peace and we can live as one, it will stop folks from coming into our community and, you know, perpetrating anything against our citizens. As for the world, you know, say a prayer at night that we will find peace and harmony because we are all brethren, we all, we all bleed, and we need to work together to make sure we live in harmony. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Ari Taylor.
There we go. Thank you so much. So first, I'd like to really say I think resolutions are extremely important, but this type of hate can absolutely have no home in our city. And I think one of the ways we, we do that is we lead by example. It's so much more than our words. It's the way that we hold ourselves. It's the way that we reach out when we see something, whether it's on Facebook, whether, you know, whether it's out in the community, whether it's something that someone we know says, that we make a very clear stand that that does not belong here and that will not be tolerated in our city. And it takes each one of us really leading with that value to make sure that it, it stops there. Going forward, I think, I don't think, I know we need to ensure that there is representation in all aspects of our city of all the diverse cultures that are here. When we are one of the most diverse cities in Massachusetts and we have, I believe it was the most diverse high school in Massachusetts, those kids need to see themselves in positions of leadership in, from the school systems to City Hall and everywhere in between. And I think when we do that, you know, it's not going to be overnight, but if we can take a stand and, and create space for everybody, then I think this is something that we can overcome together.
Thank you very much, Ari. Our next question is from the Mass Senior Action Council. Just recently, the Senior Community Center has merged with the Youth Enrichment Center at the Senior Center Building located on Washington Street. What are your thoughts on this new arrangement? And do you see the youth program eventually getting their own space? Why don't we start with Ari Taylor? Ari, come on back.
There we go. That time, that was easy. Thank you so much. I'm going to ask you to repeat that question just to make sure I heard it in its entirety correctly.
Sure will.
Thank you so much.
Just recently, the Senior Community Center has merged with the Youth Enrichment Center at the Senior Center Building located on Washington Street. What are your thoughts on this new arrangement? And do you see the youth program eventually getting their own space?
Thank you so much. So I believe that intergenerational companionship and talks is integral to our society. We need to learn from our past. We need to learn from our kids. We need that. However, I would like to see the teens be in their own center and, and kind of go back and forth and initiate some intergenerational conversations and, and activities, but also give the seniors their own space. I think that's important as well. I'd really like to speak to a lot of the seniors and see what their stance are. Some of the ones that I've spoken to are not necessarily happy with this situation. And I think it's a little too soon to really say how it will all work out because we have not fully gotten back to normal, whatever we want to call it. So while I do want to foster more relationships between our seniors and our teens, I do also think that seniors deserve a space that is just theirs. And, and I'd hate to see their programming get cut or rushed because there are, you know, extra people in the building and that's, that's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Barbara Murphy, your thoughts?
There we go. Thank you very much. Yes, you know, in a, a world where we had the funding, personally, I would love to have seen the teen center stay in its own building. Fortunately, that wasn't the case financially over the last year. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Malden Teen Enrichment Center and I'm also a member of Malden Senior Action and a senior myself that goes to the senior center. So I kind of see both sides of it here. It's, it's a trial period at the moment. It's a facility that we are using for both groups of individuals. And we will, I know Kathy McMullin and our new senior center director are working together to make sure that this is done seamlessly and there's no impact to the seniors' programming. It will be something as the senior center comes back online to its full capacity as well as the teen center comes back to its full capacity, something that we are going to have to look at closely and reconcile. If the funds were available or we could make them available, I certainly would vote for the teen center to have its own location. And, you know, I do believe, I spoke actually at city council meeting the other night when the director of the senior center was in there. I do believe intergenerational activities is extremely important, whether it's teaching the seniors how to utilize computer and technology, or whether it's our seniors giving guidance to the children as to maybe some knowledge that they have that they could pass along that would make their life easier.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you very much. Steve Winslow, your thoughts? Should they get their own space or are you happy with the coexistence?
Joe, as you know, you know, I've worked in many communities, Somerville, Malden, Gloucester, and, and know that, you know, this is not, we're not the only community that struggles with supporting our, our seniors and our teens. I think in the, the ideal world, having, you know, I think teens and seniors like to have their kind of own space to, you know, to, to run their own things and, 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 you know, have their own friendships and that. So I, I think that's in the ideal world. But many communities struggle. It is very expensive to run two facilities. So I, I think ideally, I mean, if we could do it, I would do that. And, you know, we struggled. I think we really wanted to find it, another space for the teen center and we just did not find something that worked. I know 15 Ferry Street was kind of an interim thing and it wasn't really a great space for, for the kids. I, I think actually that, you know, that this is, is a good resolution, is an interim solution so the teens have somewhere to go rather than having nothing. But yeah, I mean, I definitely want to monitor, monitor it and as the opportunity comes and we get an opportunity to look at some other space would be great. So, so I, I think it's, you know, generally, we do have to see how this works out. I was happy to see the senior center director come to city council the other night and talk about the intergenerational programs, but I definitely think that, you know, they're very distinct user, users and, and have, it's important to recognize those different needs. Thanks. Good.
Thank you, Steve. Jerry Leone, you're up.
Well, I'll echo what all three people said. I think it's great that they're together. I think that should happen more often, but eventually everyone's going to need their own space. And that's the, I don't think it should be rushed because everything needs to be safe. If the building like on Ferry Street or any other building that's available, then, you know, a task force or a committee should look into it. But maybe for the time being, I mean, how to, you know, we have to also see how everyone feels. I know there's some seniors that don't want to be there with the teens, you know, unfortunately, and vice versa. But I think it's great and let's not rush this, you know, just to get them a place really quick. We want to make sure that whatever building they go in is going to be comfortable and, you know, safe in a great location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Candidates, we're halfway there. We are halfway there. We have another question from our friends at GMAC. The city has implemented several initiatives to improve language access to city services. What if any role, what if any role have you played in these endeavors? And what additional measures would you like to see applied? We're going to start this one with Jerry Leone.
Well, we faced that when I was on the school committee with, you know, different students coming from different languages. So we had to make sure that, you know, their work in the books and all the materials, they were able to read and be comfortable. I'm not on the city council, obviously, so whatever work has been done, they can speak of, but I think that we can do more. Obviously, with websites, when you go to the various businesses, there could be like a sign put on the door with just like different, you know, languages for people to, to read, like kiosks in the square. I think like, because like I said, Malden has a vast array of different languages, so it's, it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you very much, Jerry. Steve Winslow, you're up.
Yeah, no, I know. Um, since I've been involved in the council, um, we have started tackling that question more. And I mean, I think one of the things uh I as a counselor and a candidate have made a consistent effort to reach out to organizations of uh people who are non-English speakers. Um, and I know there's a big language gap, particularly in our Chinese-speaking community. So I think it's great. We have um, we have had more efforts. I know in particular, I as part of the Affordable Housing Trust, as we looked at our um Affordable Housing Plan, we uh committed the money to do full translations of our public hearings and other type of things. Uh, the mayor's office in terms of some of the review of the city's police use of force policy has made full language access a commitment there. Um, the Malden River Works Project's been a very successful thing. We're we're taking advantage of Zoom and translation things there. Um, you know, so we as a city, I mean, the school department does, you know, probably ten times as much just because the need to communicate directly with parents. We are doing more. We need to do more. I mean, one of the things I would like to do is really look and maybe work with the Citizens Engagement Committee, just form the like a task force to really figure out as we get more resources for language access, how that money is best spent. Um, so that's one of the things um we we surely do. Um, there's a challenge to have everything that we do um translated instantaneously. So we have to think strategically. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Ari Taylor, your thoughts?
Thank you. Um, so I I'd like to say off the bat that um Google Translate is not an option. We we need real solutions to ensure that our community is united and one way that we do that is by offering translation services, offering opportunities for people to learn multiple languages, to help with job placement and help with career advancements so that they can work in diverse cities. We've been a diversity for quite some time. So this is, this is something that should have been in the works for several years and not just starting in twenty twenty one. I feel like there should be City Hall should have tran- translated materials out in the front accessible to everybody who goes in there. We should ensure that there's translators on staff to make sure people can pay their bills and ask questions comfortably and get correct information. And and that, you know, we need to create a community for all of us and we do that by reaching out and meeting people where they're at and taking the extra steps. And that's an important measure that needs to happen now.
Thank you, Ari. Barbara Murphy, your response?
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, yes, I just want to say um something um to um respond to something that one of the candidates said. City Hall has been doing an amazing job with new hires in trying to hire folks that are uh multilingual. And uh we have uh done an amazing job over the last uh four or five years in hiring folks in different departments that we are able to utilize um throughout City Hall to help with language issues. Not to say that it can't get better. It certainly can, but it's not something that we started in twenty twenty one. It is something that had started a lot earlier. Translation has been in the budget for a number of years now and we are working to increase uh the amount of money that's available. Um, even this past budget cycle, I um actually asked the mayor to increase the line item by an additional fifteen thousand and he uh agreed that that was a good move. So, you know, we are consistently looking for ways to translate. The other thing is we are finally in a new state-of-the-art City Hall. And one of the things on the Municipal Building Committee that I really have advocated for is that we have a comprehensive language plan, kind of like a master plan. We talk about having master plans for, you know, uh climate vulnerability or our parks or, you know, other projects. But we need a master plan for language access. And that is key that we do that immediately and that it's not just for City Hall, but we have a seamless platform that embraces all of our buildings and all of our departments. So if an individual goes into City Hall and looks at a kiosk, it's the same kiosk in the same platform that they're looking at when they go into the fire department for a fire permit or they go to the police department or they go to the school department. So we need to work together with within the city government to actually create a master steering committee that will look at language access.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you very much. Our next question comes from the Malden Advocate. It's a rather lengthy question, so may I want to make a couple of notes to yourself. Public safety and specifically how public policing is or has been done, it's become a lightning rod issue across the nation. In turn, politicians and groups have taken stances on the issue of budget allocations for police departments with the slogans "defund the police" and "the people's budget", becoming synonymous with lowering and or reallocating funding for police departments, cutting personnel and funneling those funds towards other uses within the municipality. The question on that, what is your general stance on public safety and police funding in Malden? And do you support the concepts of the people's budget or the "defund the police" movement? I'm going to start with Barbara. Barbara, your response, please?
And there I am. Okay. Um, yes, that is a a very lengthy question. Uh, public safety is one of the key issues that I that I do work on. Um, you have to have safety in our neighborhoods in order to have a vibrant community. You cannot um lose the streets, as they say, because that would be um very detrimental to our citizens and um the the families that they want to raise here. I believe that there's a way for us to work within the budget to completely fund the police. I do not believe we should defund them. Do I believe that they need additional money for training for de-escalation, which they have been going through and we have been funding? But, you know, always having training for, you know, new ways of dealing with um an issue that is is happening on the street so that no one is hurt um is something that we need to continue to do and make sure that we focus on. I do know that Elliot Services, you know, has been um is is embedded now with the Police Department and have gone on many calls with them to help sit diffuse situations that might not have ended as well as they did if they had not been there. There have been a number of grants written um and we will, we as a city will continue to write the grants to make sure that the emotional peace of policing, okay, is available to our citizens in our police department when they go on a call. Um, it's um, you know, I, if you ask me point blank, would I defund the police? The app answer is absolutely no, but I do think they need more resources.
Barbara, I'm going to take a little liberty here as the moderator. I'm going to ask you, would you be in favor of abolishing city police departments or defunding them completely?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And I am going to, I am going to ask all candidates the same question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ari Taylor.
Thank you so much. That is a lengthy question and it has a lot of pieces. Um, so I'm going to try and take them little bits at a time. First off, I'd like to just state that I believe the the term "defund the police" harms more than it, it helps in a lot of ways. Um, I do not think we need to defund the police. I do think we need to have a very difficult, uncomfortable conversation that brings all the stakeholders to the table. We have community members that do not feel safe. We have police officers that do not feel like they have the resources to do their job or that they're asked to do a job that actually isn't their job. I see a lot of people who are not police officers um taking a lot of sides and a lot of stances and I I don't think that that's okay. The way I look at it is things have changed in this country and the society and the city over the past thirty years, over the past forty, you know, over the past two years. And we should always be looking at ways that community-funded programs and socially-funded programs are working and working along with the community. So I would not like to defund the police. To answer the question that uh you had asked previously, I would not abolish the police. Um, but I would say that we start having significant conversations and uncomfortable ones, not over Facebook, but in person, transparently and with the stakeholders and make it comfortable for them to talk.
Thank you, Ari. You answered both questions. You would not be in favor of abolishing or defunding. Thank you very much. Jerry Leone, you're up. Your thoughts on the issue?
Thanks, Joe. Uh, as a former police officer in the military, I I could not wait for this question. I want to start off by saying I was very honored along with Counselor Murphy. I hope she doesn't mind me bringing up her name. And Counselor Seika, all three of us got the endorsement of the Malden Superior Officers Union. Uh, that's very important. Being elected to the City Council, I will make sure and I pledge to them that I would not vote on a budget that would take money away from the police. They need all the equipment that they can police, risk their lives every day, which everyone knows. People want to use the slogan "support the blue". Well, I do and also we can't forget the firefighters, so I support the red. As we speak right now, the Firefighters Union is deliberating whether they're going to support me, endorse me or not. I think if I get that endorsement, those two endorsements are probably one of the two biggest endorsements in the city concerning public safety and that should tell you something that they're behind me when it when it comes to that. You look at all over the country, different cities want to defund. I know I won't have time right now to list it, but and I'm not going to speak for any other ward, but I know Counselor Winslow was one of the people that put his signature on a long list of things that he'll he'll say that he doesn't want to defund the police, but he will and I want people of Ward Six to know that. So to abolish or to defund, those words never will come out of my mouth and my opinion
So Jerry, for the record, you would not be in favor of abolishing or defunding the Malden Police Department?
No, never.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Steve Winslow, your thoughts?
I cannot uh fathom how Jerry Leone has come and put words into my mouth. I have never said I would defund the police. I'm head of public safety. I take my responsibilities ser- seriously and I've been doing my homework on this. I have um met with our police forces and I've been very impressed by the efforts been made over the past decade to make sure our police are reflective of our community and sensitive to that. Um, I've I've done my homework to see that our our policing staffing is not overstaffed. So um I am supportive of our police. Um, I basically say if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So um I think that's where I come from. Uh, but I do agree that um there are some issues that have been broken, that we have asked our police officers to do too much in terms of me- mental health and opioid abuse. And as we uh go forward as a city, as the funding opportunities come up, that we do fund things like Elliot Services and we have um that dedicated staff to help our police do their job better. And but that staff needs the backing of the police to do their work as well. So I definitely fit to fit there. I mean, I applaud um Chief Mullis, who was one of the first chiefs around who condemned what happened to George Floyd and I before um George Floyd's murder, I had met with Chief Mullis to talk about and I was impressed that our police force was already working to um do its certifications. But as a public official, um, I am always willing to have the hard conversations, um even with uh people that are respected as our police and fire. We need to have those conversations and um, but I I think they're doing a good job. Thank you.
So Steve, you for on the record, are you in favor of abolishing the Mald- Malden Police Department or defunding it?
Hmm, I would never abolish the Malden Police Department and I have, I've never said I would defund them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto the next question. From Malden High School, "Blue and Gold", that is the Malden High School newspaper. "In many places in this country, including Malden High, vaping has become a public health crisis. What can city government do to improve the situations in schools and implement solutions?" I'm going to bring back Steve Winslow.
Well, I know at the state level, we have done things to uh to prevent teens to have uh vaping and we've really clamped down on vaping in general. I know that um having worked, initially my work, I was working to help uh reduce smoking indoors and I know our Board of Health has expanded to work towards the vaping as well. So I just very, you know, committed to make sure that um it nicotine addiction in youth doesn't end up being coming at smoking as well. And we also know that um vaping has uh been shown to have a lot of other adverse health impacts. So I I would definitely support continued efforts to make sure that there's not access to vape products in Malden and and following the the state bans on that type of thing and that the teens do not have access to that as we have done with smoking. Um, and so I think that we need to uh really work hard on that particular aspect and make sure our businesses aren't selling those things as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jerry Leone, your thoughts?
Well, just like any other, well, drugs or cigarettes, um, that should not happen in the high school. Uh, there should be a a better crackdown with teachers, principals and superintendents. Maybe though, you know, the school, I mean, that's obviously uh an important question for both City Council and School Committee. Um, I know the School Committee should, you know, look at the policy and and maybe have to revamp that and be really strict with suspensions. And obviously, if students keep on doing that, it it's the staff that needs to crack down. So I don't even know if the city would want to find the school. I'm not sure, but bottom line is that should not be happening at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Barbara Murphy.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Uh, yes, uh whether it's tobacco, alcohol, vape products or cannabis, we definitely need to make sure that it stays out of the hands of our children, which is why the age is at twenty one. I know on a local level, the Board of Health does a tremendous job in visiting different stores in our community, um, setting up little stings sometimes to see if stores are selling to our youth. Um, that is a program that does need to continue so that we do find those stores that are abiding by the law. Also, um, the schools are are a huge issue. Um, and there does need to be accountability within the walls of the schools when people are smoking vaping or smoking pot um in the bathrooms. I have heard that, you know, that is an issue within the schools, uh schools and um that needs to be addressed by the School Committee and by the administration in the school. Um, and it goes beyond um just vaping. It goes back down to gummy bears that have cannabis in them. It is definitely a problem in our community and in in our country um that we need to um not take our eyes off of and make sure we're doing everything we can to keep products out of the hands of our youth.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Ari Taylor, you're up.
Thank you so much. Um, first of all, I'd like to start with vaping is a public health crisis and this is extremely important that we get ahead of right now. Education goes a long way in ensuring that our our teens, our parents, our consumers have the information that they need to know why vaping is is dangerous to your health. Um, it goes beyond, uh, as a previous cigarette smoker, you know, it goes beyond the little information on your package. We need to really get down. This needs to be in every health class. This needs to be at the stores where you're buying it. I would like to see, we take such pride in in going through a process for cannabis licensing, which could be giving back a large amount of money to our city and helping us financially. For things like vaping education, cannabis education, I'd like to see the stores selling vape products have stricter rules, have stricter enforcement. We really need that. Our kids deserve better. Our communities deserves better. And if, you know, we have these rules for liquor stores and cannabis stores, vaping and cigarettes should be included.
Very good. Thank you, Ari. I'm gonna move on to another question from the Malden Chamber of Commerce. On a visit to a local business not long ago, the owner mentioned that keeping customers was very challenging since many of his clients were renters and that they tend to stick around only for a couple of years, then they move on. Malden has only thirty-six to forty percent of its housing as owner occupied. What ideas do you have to increase this number in order to help local businesses? Let's start with Ari Taylor.
Thank you so much. Affordable housing is a passion of mine and something that I am, I have put a lot of thought into over the past ten years or so. We have opportunities to look outside the box and create affordable home ownership programs, much like, and there are several opportunities that other cities have that Malden does not utilize as far as down payment assistance programs and programs that help keep renters in the market of buying in Malden. You know, if you've rented for two years, there's deed restrictions. This would take me longer than two minutes to answer because I have so many ideas. We have plenty of problem properties. I'd like to see the city take over those problem properties. We have them. And, you know, the ones that are foreclosed on and provide them back to the community with lower interest rates. The more we have people able to afford their homes and afford to live in Malden, the more additional money they have to spend in our businesses, to spend in our stores. It's a better quality of life and it's necessary. And I think there are many options, starting with the problem properties, going with down payment assistance and looking at, really creating a housing task force that looks at every option and looks outside the box as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Murphy, your thoughts on the ever expensive way of living here in the Northeast?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I am unmuted. Well, I am committed to creating and preserving affordable housing. You know, I'm really happy to see that the MRA is now part of the city and some of their focus will now be on the housing effort and housing stability. One thing that I would really like to see is more opportunity for affordable home ownership. And one of the things that the city has done recently is they were able to get a hundred thousand dollar grant, which has allowed the building department to hire a housing inspector. And he's currently investigating vacant, foreclosed in abandoned properties. The goal is to collaborate with developers to purchase and rehabilitate these properties in order to sell them as deed restricted affordable housing to income qualified households. It's something that we, you know, are looking at on a citywide basis. Just recently, we had drew a blank. Habitat for Humanity come into the city, and it was actually two years ago. The city council went out. We actually spent a day out there putting up walls. COVID has kind of slowed that process down, but there's two homes ready to be used. And I believe there's four or six more units that are going to be kind of conduized so that we'll afford housing. So we need to turn over every rock to keep people here. And that's not to say that everyone has to own a home. Some people, I lived in an apartment building for years. So some of our tenants are, you know, long-term Maldonians, and they've been here their whole life. They're great people, and sometimes they prefer to live in an apartment. So.
Thank you, Barbara. Jerry Leone, your thoughts?
Well, when it comes to affordable housing, I think in my opinion, Malden has done its, you know, fair share and other, other communities in the surrounding area need to do their share. There's other cities and towns along the commuter rail. But I'm more in favor of affordable housing for seniors and veterans. One thing that we didn't touch upon that could help and keep people staying in the city is finding a way to lowering the taxes, especially for seniors. Obviously, taxes, my mother owns her house. She's eighty-three, and she's always complaining that the taxes are going up and up and up. But there's going to be a way for that to keep people in Malden. But there's various reasons why people leave. You know, I know a lot of these apartments that were built in the city were for people that may have just gotten married and obviously when they, they move out to buy another house. But the city council, that's one of the things, you know, if elected, that a task force should be formed to figure out different scenarios of keeping people into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Steve Winslow.
Well, Jer, the reality is we've had that task force. I've been on it. We've been working on it for a couple of years. It's called the Affordable Housing Trust. So we are already working on this issue. As Barbara mentioned, one of the things that came out of our Affordable Housing Study was with strong support in the community to try to find more affordable homeownership opportunities. So we are following a model that Somerville's come up with to work to get properties that are lying vacant back in usable condition and made affordable for our residents. So there, that's one of the things we're doing. We passed inclusionary zoning so that whenever a building is built with eight or more condos, there will be units that are affordable. One of the things I was always impressed with my work in Somerville and even in Gloucester was the role of community development corporations in providing affordable housing. My own daughter in Somerville is about to have the opportunity to own a house in Somerville, which is kind of absurd. So many people are moving from Somerville because they're being priced out. So one of the things is we need intent. I've been already doing that work for the past two years. I literally wrote the documents for the Affordable Housing Trust. So we need to do this with intention, and we've done our homework and we have a plan. We need to do more. And so we need to look at all opportunities and, and work with our CDC, the Asian Community Development Corporation, who's doing stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We're getting into the home stretch here, candidates, and I want to thank you all. You're all abiding by the time limits because I would get a poke from the technical folks that were going over. But thank you so much for abiding by. Our last question is again from our friends at the Malden High, Blue and Gold. The Malden Public Schools, at least at Malden High School, is severely understaffed. We have been for a while, but this year has been especially hard on the student body. This issue affects everything from not being assigned lockers one month into the school year or even the amount of bathrooms available for students' youths. On top of this, there are many students that are missing out on their education and spending their time in study rooms, either because of the lack of long-term subs or classes that are available. What specific plans do you have to support school funding so students can have the most equitable experience in school? Ari Taylor, it's a big question for a lot of the students, even during this time of post pandemic. Your thoughts on it?
Thank you. I mean, this really comes down to funding. That's what the city council can do for the schools, right? So when we're looking at the budget and we're looking at reasonably where we need to be spending our money, our students are our future. Our students, you know, they deserve the best that Malden has to offer. So we really should be digging into our budget, looking at where we can find more funding. Maybe this is how we, you know, hire a grant writer, diversify how we're getting money in so that we can ensure our students are taken care of. Every single one of them deserves an education that is is above and beyond. And if we're not looking for funding for that, and if we're not actively searching for ways to make that happen, we're doing a disservice to our whole community and to the future of our city by not investing in those kids. So the short answer of it is dig into that budget. Find out where we can reallocate money, where we can find funding, and let's, let's go there. Let's boldly go and get our students what they need, especially if it's a staffing issue. Students shouldn't have this question, and it's sad that this is what we're dealing with right now.
Thank you, Ari. I'm mixing the order up here a little bit, and I think my technical guy is gonna, I'll hear from him afterwards, but let's go to Steve Winslow on this question.
Yeah, I definitely, having been on the school committee, and, you know, we try to keep staffing in levels, well, at least teaching the levels, one teacher per twenty-five students. And I know that that's, we're having a hard time maintaining that, and that means we've cut other staff. So I mean, a few things. One of the things we need to do is push Senator Lewis and our Rep Altrino and Rep Donato to make sure the Student Opportunity Act formula is changed so we can get the money we expect that we're seeing other communities like Chelsea, Lynn and Revere get. We're getting underfunded at the state level, even though we have a lot of ELL and other special needs students. So that's one thing. Another thing is working to expand our commercial tax base. We need bolder zoning. You know, we did as a council vote to do a major new building on Dartmouth Street. We have another proposal coming up for Pleasant Street. We have to look at our highway business districts, which are becoming outdated because we don't really have the opportunity to compete against the Amazons of the world. We got to really figure out how those major commercial areas can generate taxes so that we have the funding for our students and our police and other type of things. So, so we need, you know, help at the state level, and we also need to make sure we are helping ourselves by bolder zoning initiatives in our commercial areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Let's go over to Barbara Murphy.
And I, I'm live, I guess. I'm getting the hang of this.
You're good, Barbara.
Thank you. I agree. You know, our students are our future. They, they are everything that we should be supporting a hundred percent. And, you know, we did pass the budget this year. The school department submitted their budget to us. The way it works is the school committee and the superintendent come up with the budget, and then it is brought to the city council. We did not cut the city, the school budget at all. We fully funded it. So this is kind of my question that I'm going to work on as soon as this ends. Why is a school not staffed? Okay, because the budget should have staffed it. Is it that they can't get teachers? Are we not paying enough? Are there no subs available? Is COVID causing the problem where folks don't want to come back? I'd like to know the answer to those questions so that we can actually figure out what is going on. Because that is not a question that I wanted to hear this evening. It makes me very sad to hear it because our children should be, after the year they had, the last year, they should be in school, fully active, learning at their full potential. So it's unacceptable that that's the situation at the moment. So, you know, what I will be doing is trying to delve into what is the issue and why is this occurring? So that we can rectify it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Jerry Leone, I think I heard you said that you had previously served on the school committee. Does this surprise you that the students are asking these questions?
Yeah, I, it saddened, and Barbara Murphy basically said half of what I wanted to say and echoing Counselor Winslow, who was on the school committee prior, before me. It's a tough decision when it comes to this. I mean, I've got into situations where you never want to cut within the classroom. When I was at, when I was on the school committee, the classrooms were too large. And we had the situation where we had to cut either teachers or busing. That was a hard, that was a hard decision to make, but we did everything we could to save the teachers. And the process starts, like Barbara said, it starts with the school committee. And they need to, when they have their budget subcommittee, have a list of priorities. And they'll send to the city council, and the city council will see. And if the school committee and the city council are working together, in the future, this shouldn't be a problem. But I, as a former member, I am sad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. We are doing terrific on time. And I think I'm getting a little applause signal from the technical folks and from Uma in the background. So if you don't mind, we're going to move into the four-minute closings by each of you. I would say let's do it in reverse order, but I've been given my marching order. Ari Taylor, you are up first for your four-minute closing statement.
Thank you so much, Joe. The past two years have been some of the most trying times in our nation's history. The divisiveness amongst our communities, the pandemic, racial tensions, the vast economic divide, and so much more have shown that what we need now more than ever is bold leadership at the local level. Leaders who are willing to go back to a time where a public servant was just that, someone who served and represented the public. We need people who will make the time to reach out and listen to new ideas and who are not afraid to try something new. Because what we are experiencing right now is new for all of us. We need counselors willing to break down walls instead of build them and open ourselves and our community to the uncomfortable and real conversations so we can begin to heal and build a community that fits the needs of today's society. Our local elections are more important now than ever before. We need representation that is ready to advocate for the community, hold themselves and others accountable, and take action to ensure a Malden that works for all of us. I am Ari Taylor, and I humbly ask for your vote on November second. Thank you so much.
Ari, thank you very much. Barbara Murphy, your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Joe. Well, I must say that went a lot faster than I expected it to. And I want to start by thanking my fellow counselors for their participation tonight and for taking the time to get involved in your local government. We only have an effective government when people participate, and being willing to put yourself out there is not easy. Tonight, you heard discussion on a lot of different topics. And while we had different opinions on some issues, you most certainly heard from four people who love this city and who truly want to move Malden forward. So why should you give me the privilege of serving for two more years? My answer is simple. Over my time in office, I've brought a thoughtful and reasoned voice to the Malden City Council, which has laid the foundation for the collaboration needed to deliver for you. I have balanced the needs of Ward Five with the needs of the city and have done so in a responsible way. As a city counselor who has served through the lean years, through a pandemic and through the unrest across our nation, I've adapted my approach and focus to where it needs to be at the moment. Simply put, whether it's lending a shoulder to cry on for a longtime neighbor who left or lost one, or helping a new resident who wanted to know what a blue bag was and where to buy one. I've been there for Ward Five and for Malden, and I remain as energized and committed to continuing to do this as the day I took office. One of the most difficult parts about being a city counselor is knowing that you can't always say yes, even when you want to. However, being willing to be honest with you on what we can and can't do is the responsible thing to do so that the next generation of Maldonians can enjoy the same vibrant, balanced community we have all enjoyed. Over the next couple of years, we have an unprecedented opportunity to utilize federal funding to utilize federal funding to really leave a mark on this community. But there should be absolutely no doubt that we need to do this in a way that is prudent and does not obligate us financially long-term in a way that will only result in cuts to core services later. Over the next two years, experience, a proven ability to collaborate and a thoughtful, measured approach are going to be more critical than ever. I'm a proven leader in these areas. I'll continue to deliver for Malden and I hope you will give me the chance by casting your vote for me on November second. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Steve Winslow, closing remarks.
Thank you, Joe, for hosting this and thank you for Uma and the partners for presenting the questions and and my fellow candidates for coming out. It is a, a challenge to run and put yourself out there and I appreciate everybody. And I encourage anybody ever interested to go out and run. You know, one of the things, I have had the privilege of serving under many mirrors in Malden, Somerville, Gloucester. And one of the things I've also worked with a lot of counselors from different cities. And I often say that being a ward counselor is one of the toughest jobs in politics. You have all the responsibility on your shoulders for your quality of life in your neighborhood and all the immediacy that brings. People asking about snow and trash and other type of things. And the reality is you have very little resources, other than your own grit and determination to make stuff happen. So that is one of the things that I bring to this is my determination. You've seen my patience and persistence throughout my, you know, living in Malden to make a difference in the community. That I've been able to unite people to make things happen, to have our bike trail happen, to do community cleanups, to work to have Trafton Park improved with my fellow counselors in the mayor's office. That's what I bring. It's a lot of hard work. I have a lot of accomplishments and that hard work is rewarded by hearing kids playing at Trafton Park, seeing families down on our bike trail and, you know, working with neighbors to lower speed limits and address their issues from chasing down a dog yesterday at Weber and Maplewood Street to other type of things, working with the neighbors. But I think the key thing is Maplewood and Ward Six have some big challenges ahead. And that is making sure we have residents lead the future of Maplewood Square and I'm leading that effort. I'm not putting it aside. That's a huge issue. And working with our neighbors whose lives have just been disrupted, their basements flooded to make sure that we are working to address flooding issues. I am leading up efforts to address flooding to eliminate more lead pipes in our community. And as always, you know that I am with my experience in working with traffic safety, always looking for innovative ways so that everybody in Malden can take a bus safely or walk safely or bike safely or drive their vehicles safely so that we have a community that is for all of us. I am very committed. I consistently work with many different groups in the city and have friends and friendships that I keep up to make sure that we realize the great potential of Malden. And the example is that we in Malden have to work with diversity, just as our nation and the world struggles with this. We need to be committed and intentional to make this happen. I am one of the people making those things happen and I will be honored to have your vote on November second for Steve Winslow for Ward Six City Council. Thank you very much.
Steve, thank you very much. And finally, Jerry Leone, your closing remarks, please.
Thank you, Joe. I want to thank all the groups that submitted the questions. I want to thank candidate Ari Taylor, Counselor Barbara Murphy and Counselor Steve Winslow. November second, Ward Six will have its ultimate choice. There are two people who love the city but have a different vision. My vision is to preserve Maplewood, Ward Six, the community and neighborhood which I was born and I grew up. I'm ready for the challenge. When people have asked me, why do you even want to do this? I miss public service. Being in the military and school committee has prepared me to take on these challenges. And you can guarantee that I will fight to protect Maplewood. I will protect the police and firefighters and I will fight against any new bus and bike lanes. I thank you. My name is Jerry Leone and please consider voting for me on November second. Thank you.
Jerry, thank you very much. And that concludes our City of Malden 2021 City Council Candidates for Ward Five and Ward Six Forum. Thank you very much to the candidates. My best wishes for Uma, Urban Media Arts, its staff and board. Art sincere thanks. I'm Joe Lynch. Thank you to the viewing public and please remember to vote in the Malden City Elections on November second, 2021. Please stay safe. Have a good evening.